Good evening. Today is Monday, November 6, 2017. It's 6:34, uh, sorry, 7:34. Let's call this meeting in order. We're here for the purpose of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council. To lead us in the pledge, there's some young gentlemen from Jefferson Elementary, my alma mater. I guess Edison's my alma mater. Jefferson is where I ran the Scouts group, though. Cub Scout PAC-15, I'm gonna ask Mayor Pro Tem Johnny and the whole group to come on up and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So I'll rise, and then when these young gentlemen get settled, they're gonna lead us. Wait for my signal, Johnny. You guys can do the scout salute, right? All right. Take it away, Johnny.
[inaudible] To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every deed and justice for all.
Great job, guys. They were here earlier, and they passed an ordinance that they get two extra desserts this week. There was some conversation about not including the brothers and sisters, but ultimately that got overruled. So, good to see you folks. Clerk Spencer, roll, please.
Mulliner.
Here.
Brennan.
Here.
Sabatino.
Here.
Deuter.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Leeder.
Here.
Palmsky.
Here.
Bram.
Here.
Toledo.
Here.
York.
Here.
Levin. Absent. Park.
Here.
Hanquist.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent.
Thirteen present, one absent. We have a quorum. I'm with the agenda. Receipt of written communications. At this time, is there anybody in the audience who has any written communications they wish to submit? If so, please raise your hand if you have any written communication. Seeing none, we'll go on to public forum portion of our meeting. This is an opportunity at our meeting for anybody in the audience to address the council on any issue they so choose. We do record this, so when you're identified, we ask that you go over to the microphone on my right, your left, kind of against the wall over there, and identify yourself by name. Address is optional. We ask out of respect for the work that we have to get done this evening, out of respect for other folks who may want to speak, that you keep your comments to three minutes. If you go over three minutes, I will give you a gentle reminder and ask you to wrap up. Clerk Spencer, at this time, we also ask that you would address your council, address your comments directly to the council and specifically the chair. Clerk Spencer, at this time, is there anybody who has signed up for written, for public forum?
Yes. We'll start with Claude Pagach, 566 West Gladys.
Claude Pagach, 566 West Gladys. The council is going to be working on a budget. I gave it a little thought this week. Residents are paying for two garages. They're paying for the redevelopment of the treatment plant. We're paying for water mains. Paying for water meters and installation. But paying for water retention. That's all being done with general obligation bonds. Commercial entities, they're in TIFs, and the council was wise enough to also kick them in so that they can share in the sales taxes. The things I mentioned in the beginning, the water mains and the treatment plant, are all beneficial for both. But it's still the residents that are footing the bill for it. Governments always say they need more. And this particular council is no different than the other legislative bodies in this town. They need more. Well, if legislative bodies feel that they need more, run the cities, parks, schools, what makes them believe that it's the residents can do it less? And that's the reality of it. You're gonna vote on a budget, and every group that comes before you is gonna say, "We need more. We can't survive without less." And more than likely, since you got a council that's 13 to 1, very few will say anything, won't object. What do you tell the residents? State taxes are going up, federal government's gonna change the tax code. Even the mayor said the state is gonna give the city as much money as they did last, last time around. How are you gonna make up the money? If you give away the tax dollars, you gotta replace it. If you load up the residents with general obligation bonds, they gotta be paid. One time, I thought I'd pay all general obligation bonds by 2035. Well, it looks like we're gonna be paying general obligation bonds till about 250, and that's just this year. You guys got a great wish list, and all's I hear is the people want it.
Ms. Pagach, I'd ask you to wrap up your comments. You're at your three minutes.
Once you come to these meetings, this is unusual. You have four or five people. Just tell me, where is this large group of people that want all the things you guys say they want?
Bianca Parisi.
Bianca Parisi, resident of Elmhurst. I attended today's Fly Quiet ad hoc meeting this morning, and to say that I am disheartened would be an understatement. Today, the CDA presented its findings on the Fly Quiet test rotation number three. This is the test that has had the greatest impact on residents of Elmhurst. This is what we, residents of Elmhurst, have been asking the aldermen and our elected officials to take notice of. Take, to take notice that this is an important issue to us, to hear our concerns, to become involved, and to fight for us. Unfortunately, at today's meeting, we needed a representative from Elmhurst to stand up for its citizens when the city of Bensonville and the 45th Ward in Chicago began asking for results that removed Elmhurst and our complaints because they believe we skewed those results. This type of politics is what happens when committees don't have all the people that have a vested interest represented. Where was Elmhurst's representation to say that it isn't correct and to insist that our community did not skew any results? We needed someone to say that we have been informing our citizens about Fly Quiet, about the survey, and about the complaint website, just like Park Ridge, Itasca, and Wooddale did during past test rotations, but we didn't have that today. I'm here to ask that Elmhurst make a formal request to join the Fly Quiet ad hoc committee. I am asking that this request and all that goes with it be made as soon as possible. Since the vote on the interim Fly Quiet test could be this month, I am asking that the city waste no time by bogging this down in committees. We need this, and we need this now. Two other cities that are affected by diagonal runways have already or in the process of submitting their requests. Elmhurst absolutely must have a seat on this committee if we have any hope of not having a permanent runway, runway rotation plan similar to test three. Thank you.
Barbara Lonergan.
Barbara Lonergan, 261 West Fremont Avenue. My comments tonight are in regards to today's ONCC ad hoc committee meeting, at which our ONCC rep and alternate rep were absent. While I appreciate that the city sent representation, the city staffer who was in attendance is not up to speed on this issue and cannot provide public comment to the many issues that were presented at today's meeting. Park Ridge has made a formal request to join the ONCC ad hoc committee. Glenview is in the process of committing, submitting their request. I ask that Mayor Morley also formally request to join. The diagonal communities are only represented on the ad hoc committee by Fair, of which Elmhurst is not a member, and it is not clear if Fair has a vote. The Chicago Department of Aviation will be sharing two to three scenarios on proposed runway rotation plans with the ad hoc committee a few days prior to the next November 17 meeting. The committee will then be able to review these proposed rotations and formulate questions and feedback for November 17. Because Elmhurst is not a part of the ad hoc committee, we strongly encourage the city of Elmhurst to request those materials from Fair prior to the 17th so that you can formulate your own response to these proposed plans. If ad hoc foregoes the vote on the 17th, Elmhurst has an opportunity to provide feedback during public comment, but the way all ONCC meetings are run, public comment happens after the business portion of the meeting. If ad hoc decides to vote on November 17th prior to public comment, any feedback from the city of Elmhurst is moot. As a reminder, the ONCC chair and ad hoc committee have encouraged communities and reps to submit not only their recommendations for future Fly Quiet runway rotations, but also their anecdotal feedback on the impacts of runway rotation tests. Any submissions need to happen by November 15. If Elmhurst has any feedback, or if you have runway rotation recommendations, and it has been suggested that the recommendations submitted by Glenview are in fact recommendations of the diagonal coalition, I'd urge you to present them to the ad hoc committee. The test three survey data favors Elmhurst, due in part to the city's ads in the Independent. However, the Bensonville city manager was very dismissive of the test three data today, suggesting that the only thing that was proven from the test three survey is that, and I quote, "advertising works." When Itasca and Park Ridge created extensive web pages promoting Fly Quiet, no one questioned it. When Sean Barg stated in an ad hoc meeting that they would step up their efforts to promote the test three survey to their community, no one questioned it. And when state rep Christine Winger of Wooddale advertised the survey on her website, no one questioned it. Yet Bensonville is suggesting ONCC now dismiss the survey data. Had Elmhurst been represented at today's ad hoc meeting, this could have been addressed. With a potential vote happening on November 17, we may not have an opportunity to speak to this because they're going to rush through a vote. And finally, this all ties back to the fact that there is no process in place for the vote. The ONCC has dedicated two years to these runway rotations, and they require no member to consider any data in their vote. While it is suggested that all members vote on a fair and equitable plan, because there are no guidelines in place weighing all of the factors that play into this, members can simply vote on what is best for their own community. No matter how this works, it, this, none of this bodes well for Elmhurst. I'm interested in hearing the city's report today on Fly Quiet, seeing as we were not adequately represented at today's meeting.
Sean Loughlin.
Sean Loughlin, 207 Fairview. I've participated in the various surveys online for the Fly Quiet patterns over the last several months. I was dismayed to hear the two previous comments earlier that this being such a priority topic for Elmhurst that we weren't represented in today's meeting. I wanna know what happened. Why were we not represented? A second issue I wanted to talk about was the parking structures. Thankfully, we have these three parking structures now. They serve us well as a community, but I feel that the, the parking structure that is there, um, gosh, I'm drawing a blank right now. The newest one.
Edison.
I forget. It's across the street from Dulles Cleaners. It's got an incredible amount of parking for retail patrons during the day, and if you take a drive-through there on a rainy day, you'll see that all three parking structures are full for people that wanna pay for daily parking to take Metro downtown, but there's, I don't know, three empty levels for retail parking during the day, and it just seems a little bit out of whack. So maybe that can be brought into balance.
That's all who's signed in, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, that's it for public forum for those who signed in. At this time, is there anybody who wishes to address the council at this time but did not have an opportunity to sign in on our sign-in sheet? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing none, that concludes public forum for this evening. Onto agenda item five, announcements. Any announcements from the dais? Okay, consent agenda, agenda item six. At this time, is there any item on the consent agenda any alderman wishes to have removed to vote no or provide further comment? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda in its entirety. Motion by Alderman Deuter. Second by Alderman Hanquist. Clerk Spencer.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Wha, uh, excuse me. Brennan.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Leeder.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Levin. Absent. Park.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Consent agenda in its entirety is approved. Onto committee reports, agenda item seven. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask that you read the recommendation.
Therefore, the development planning and zoning committee recommend that the city council approve redevelopment agreement and financial assistance incentive with the Elmhurst Auto Group. The city attorney is hereby directed to prepare the necessary documents for city council approval, signed by Michael Hanquist Chairman, Noel Toledo Vice Chairman, unsigned by Mark A. Mulliner.
Okay, to put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the report and recommendation as read. Motion by Alderman Hanquist, second by Alderman Toledo. Alderman Hanquist, your report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I think most on the dais are aware, we have been working on this project for a little over two years, about two years, and tonight, we're asking for your support to move the RDA forward in support of BMW. A little history here, and I kinda start with my own experience. When I first became an alderman, for those that don't have regular touchpoints with us or the work we're doing, these types of agreements would bother me because they're very large dollar amounts, and I would question why the city would be involved in helping a business in any way, particularly in a way that's large. So when I first became an alderman, I, I had to take a lot of time to try and understand these types of agreements, why they're in place, and why we have supported them in the past and continue to support them in the future. And tonight, we are supporting Elmhurst BMW, which is also a Jaguar dealership and a Toyota dealership on Grand Road. And, and so when we took the time to view this, it came rather quickly to us as a city because BMW corporate, as most of the car dealerships interface with as franchises with their corporate, corporate sets certain standards for their dealerships and how those dealerships should be set up and should be run, and then individual owners then operate those franchises. In the case of BMW, when they came to do a visit, they did not like the setup BMW Elmhurst had. It was too small, and, and actually, as some of the stories were relayed to me, they were actually starting to move cars in the actual lobby because they weren't perfectly set up to BMW standards. So it's one example of how the corporate manufacturers of automobiles put tremendous amount of time and effort and detail into individual car dealerships and how they operate. So in this case, they came forward and said, "We're, we're not comfortable with the size or scope of your dealership, and we're gonna recommend you move to a larger facility." And they had already gone through the process of looking at other sites, and in one site in particular was a neighboring community. It had more space, the land was cheaper, and was closer to a major highway as well, and they started to influence BMW to go that way. BMW wanted to stay here. As I mentioned, they had other dealerships here. They've been in the community since 1961, and they wanted to stay here. So they approached the city for some, you know, for some assistance to look at expansion possibilities and ultimately any sort of development help or redevelopment help they could get. And the city then moved forward to engage with BMW and look at alternatives and look at what we could do. And at the time, we were going through a TIF process, which I'll get to in a minute, and it worked in conjunction with development, in this case redevelopment of BMW to keep them here in the city of Elmhurst. So that's kinda the backdrop of how we, we started with this process. Why are car dealerships so important to us, and why would we take the time to go through this process, number one, and then also look to make these kinds of investments? And the answer is pretty straightforward, is the tax base that is generated for the city of Elmhurst is, it's the number one source of our sales tax revenue, and it's the number one area that helps keep our taxes down. So we take our businesses in Elmhurst very seriously, and we're very supportive of them, not because it's just a philosophical choice, it's because it's a financial choice. And in these cases, we can look at these, these types of scenarios as investments, not as cost centers. We're not simply going out to, to quote-unquote "giveaway money." As I get with, from friends all the time, "Hey, if you're gonna give a business that much money, why don't you come redo my front porch?" And I said, "Well, are you gonna generate any tax revenue back to the city for your nice new front porch?" And they go, "Ah, Mr. Smart Guy, yeah. Mr. Alderman, thank you." So there's a lot of misinformation that goes on around these agreements, and that's why I make the joke, but the point is, business in Elmhurst is important to the quality of life we have in Elmhurst, and it goes to kinda the fundamental of how we run the city. So that's some of the history and the backdrop to it. The, the story itself is BMW, with this support, is going to expand Grand Avenue, and one point is, if they were to leave, we would have a massive hole on Grand Avenue.
Alderman Hanquist?
Lake.
I mean, on Lake Street, I'm sorry. Was I saying Grand Avenue?
York.
Oh, my apologies. On Lake Street. So we would have a massive hole on Lake Street, and what's happening with this is, not only is BMW staying where it is, but they're going to expand two lots to the north. So we're expanding the operation, which also includes expanding additional sales, which includes additional revenue. So that is the backdrop to why we're making this investment and looking to move this forward. As I mentioned earlier, we do have a TIF agreement. I have the TIF financing incentive policy in front of me, and we've gone through this, and the committee went through a very rigorous process to look at how we put this agreement together. I'd like to thank city staff. They spent an enormous amount of time. Assistant Manager Cop and City Manager Grabowski working through this. This is a very large agreement. There's a lot of detail in here, and it took a long time to work with the BMW group to put this together. So I wanted to thank them. They did an excellent job. Finally, I think, as I wrap this up, it's important to recognize that in this case, and we've done this in other cases in supporting car dealerships, the city has, has a history, a long history with supporting car dealerships along both Lake Street and Grand Avenue, and it has been a cornerstone of our economic development that we hope to continue to invest in as we go forward for many years. In this case, I just wanted to highlight that the family that's been involved with both Toyota, BMW, and Jaguar has never come before us before for any sort of incentive. This is the first time they've done so. They've been here since 1961, and they've run the, probably, if not the, most successful business towards sales tax, absolutely one of the top. So for all those points, I'm asking for everyone's support that we move this RDA forward tonight, and I'll open up for any thoughts or questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Mulliner.
As it was noted, I was unsigned on this report, and I just wanna make it clear to everyone that the reason it was unsigned was on a rare occasion, I did have to be gone last week, and I was not able to attend the meeting or two weeks ago, so I was not here, so I could not sign the report. I am wholeheartedly in support of this agreement. This is one of the most important agreements that we've had in a long time. This will keep a dealership who actually, you know, when we did the first TIF II, came in and purchased that land from us after we put it together as a city, so we made sure that they would stay in the town. We actually had an opportunity for them to bid on the property, and they actually paid for the property outright, and actually built their dealership here. And I just wanna make sure that everybody understands, Alderman Hanquist kept saying BMW, this is the Elmhurst Auto Deal, Auto Group, and the group that was actually trying to get them to move out of Elmhurst was BMW. They wanted to stay in Elmhurst. So I wanna make sure everybody understands that it was their focus to stay in Elmhurst. BMW was trying to say, "Hey, we can find you a better place someplace else," but they were so committed to Elmhurst, they wanted to stay here, and we're committed to having them here in this town because they've been a tremendous asset, not just in car sales, but in getting new bodies into the city of Elmhurst. Just so, a couple of statistics, so that people know this. Last year, they had approximately 77,000 visits to their dealerships, their three dealerships. That's unique visits of individuals coming in to look at vehicles, to get their cars repaired, whatever it is. That's 77,000 people coming into this community who may have not been in this community before, who may find something new and interesting in the community. I always try to look at those non-tangible things that are just as important as the dollars and cents that we're dealing with, because it brings more people into the community, and that's important to us.
Okay. Any other comments? Alderman Bram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanna start off by saying that I, I agree with Alderman Hanquist's comments when it comes to the family who owns Elmhurst Auto Group. Not only have they never come to us before, but they are huge in regards to community service to the city of Elmhurst. I don't know if you ever even stopped at the Toyota dealership, which is a, the interior is a replica of downtown Elmhurst, which is incredible. From the show, their dedication to the city of Elmhurst, and I applaud them for that. I do have some questions in regards to the report, because I, I seem to be reading into it a little bit differently. On page two, the paragraph, one, two, three, four, five, six, which is right above the beginning of a table, the report states, "The committee believed that a clawback clause in the RDA was appropriate and necessary if the..."
in the RDA was appropriate and necessary if the Elmhurst Auto Group fails to complete the project or voluntarily relocates the BMW or Toyota dealership outside of Elmhurst, the following clawback would be in effect." And I'm not going to read through the table. Here's my concern, or my question, actually both, is that it only mentions two out of the three dealerships out of the Elmhurst Auto Group, but when we actually look at the projections, the projections actually utilize all three. It includes Jaguar, but we're not committing, even though we're utilizing Jaguar as part of the projections, on when the city of Elmhurst would have, in theory at least, in their projections, the return of investment back. We're not including the clawback for that third dealership, which is the Jaguar dealership. So I'm kind of curious on why we would include it in projections. I shouldn't say I'm kind of. I would like to know why we would include it in projections but not include it in the clawback, if that's a scrivener's here. I'd like that clarified before I move on with any of my other questions.
Any follow-up? Alderman Hanquist?
The question's a fair one. Jaguar is owned now by Range Rover or vice versa, I can't remember which, and there is a process going on where they're looking to consolidate dealers. When we looked through this, we actually, the, we looked at the sales tax that came from Jaguar, and we actually did a conservative estimate on what the sales tax was and lowered it down for the report. But we don't know, and the family of Elmhurst Auto Group does not know if the manufacturer's going to allow that to stay here or combine it with another one in Chicago. So in order to move this forward, we focus primarily on the other dealerships and the expansion of the other dealerships, and then the financial business case went with those, with Jaguar being upside if they stay here. And the owners did want, obviously want to keep it here, they're going to fight for that, but this is one of those scenarios we've talked about with some of these other agreements, that if the, if the manufacturer in this case comes forward and says, you know, "This site doesn't work," for other reasons besides some of the ones we talked about tonight, but just because they want to consolidate, we didn't want this agreement to fall apart on that particular point.
Okay. Alderman Bram, you have additional comments?
Please. Thanks for Alderman Hanquist in regards to, and looking at the projections relative to BMW from a sales tax perspective as well as Toyota, it is a smaller piece of the pie. I guess I'm a little bit curious then in regards to the request by Elmhurst Auto Group. My understanding was they don't have room, and I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Alderman Hanquist, I believe that the case for the TIF incentive request is because they don't have enough room, they want to expand, or I shouldn't say want, they are told by BMW they have to expand the BMW side of the three dealerships. So I'm curious on, is there really a necessity, if Jaguar may or may not go away, to have such a, what I would deem, at least personally, a high incentive of $6 million to expand something where there might be an opportunity to build out in their current three dealerships?
So your question is, if one of their dealerships is going away, do they have to expand?
Or expand and/or expand to the degree that is being proposed, thus needing the $6 million versus something smaller.
Any on the committee care to opine? Alderman Mulliner?
I'll just respond. At this point, Jaguar is still a component of the dealership. We're hoping, and we know that they're fighting to maintain Jaguar as part of the dealership, so the assumption is that Jaguar will still be there in the next 50 years, just like all the other dealerships. That's what our intent is, that's what their intent is, so they needed to come forward and have a plan so that they could have all three dealerships here. It's not an intent that they want to get rid of a dealership, and we don't want them to get rid of it either.
Okay.
If there's nobody else?
Anybody else, any other comments? Supposed to mix it up a little. Anyone? Alderman Dunn?
I'll chime in, give Alderman Bram a little break. So this is obviously a very large incentive, $6 million that's being requested. It's, it exceeds the cumulative incentives we've, we've debated and awarded in terms of sales tax since, in about the last nine years. So it's big, and this is a, this is more relying on sales tax than the EAV increase in the property. Complicated agreement, I mean, there was a lot of documentation, I spent a lot of time looking over it. It is a $17 million project, the developers putting $11 million in and we're contributing $6 million. I, normally, our incentives are pay-as-you-go, and normally, there's a split. This is not. So there was some initial concerns on my part there, but with this being a competitive situation, this, this enterprise, these three dealerships, we get over $1 million a year in sales tax from them, and that's at risk. So we get a pretty quick payback, salvaging that relationship and having them remain there. The increment, that's, the sales tax increment that's calculated over the 10 years is well over $6 million, not including the, the increase in the TIF, the EAV increment on property tax. So although it is a, it is a high-level incentive, the payback is critical, it's a, it's a very strong business for Elmhurst, and we do want to keep them in the Elmhurst family. So I support this agreement at this time.
Any other comments? Alderman Bram, one more, is that what you're signaling? One more?
No, I was just waving to you.
That's what I got.
Waving to you.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I want to put out there first that I am not against giving an incentive to any auto dealership. Looking at past history, I know I've challenged each and every one that's come across the dais, as well as this one. When this came up, I believe it was stated by the chairman that, you know, this has been discussed for an extended period of time. I don't know if it was stated to be two years or what have you, but when it was initially brought up, I voiced my concern over the dollar amount, and Alderman Dunn's comments just now, he reiterated his concern, even though he supports the report as read today. I still have those concerns. I know it's a competitive situation. We have been told that it's a competitive situation with another community, if not multiple, but we've been told about possibly another community near us. I take that into consideration, but I also take into consideration that it would take a lot and a significant effort to move a dealership, as well as the rebranding to a new community, having part of their group in one location and the parts in another. I know that could be a snowball effect, where if one moves, then maybe the other one or two would move as well.
Six years, yeah.
Essentially, I have no evidence, and I like data points, I don't have any evidence, and I made a request for this, of what that deal that was proposed by another community. I know the petitioner doesn't have any obligation to share that with us. Obviously, that's, from a negotiation standpoint, I respect that. But with, without any evidence, I think that this dollar amount is still just too rich for my blood. I think $6 million is a hard pill to swallow. I have some concerns in regards to not including the Jaguar dealership as part of the clawback provision. Alderman Mulliner made comments on, you know, how we need to look at this holistically, as if they're going to be here for the next 50 years, and I agree with that, and I respect that. But then, if we're including the projections, I think we simultaneously need to include it in the clawback and not do different from the clawback to the projections. I'm not going to make a motion to amend to the dollar amount that I thought would be sufficient, but I cannot support this, even though I do applaud the Elmhurst Auto Group and the family for everything that they've done for Elmhurst, as well as everything they've done with these three dealerships over the years has been amazing.
Any additional comments? Clerk Sp, Clerk Spencer? Hold the vote, please.
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Sappatino?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Leader?
Aye.
Palmsky?
Aye.
Bram?
No.
Toledo?
Aye.
York?
Aye.
Levin? Absent. Mark?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Twelve ayes, one nays, one absent.
Twelve ayes, one nay motion carries. Agenda M 7.1 is approved. On to reports and recommendations. Mayor Morley, that's me, I'll try to be quick. Three items real quick. Veterans Day is this Saturday, and as always, the city holds a ceremony in Wilder Park. Jeez, I should look that up, is it inside? Usually this time of year, it's inside because it's a little cold. So, well, when you get there, if no one's standing outside, go into the mansion. It's at 10:30 this Saturday, and it's a great event. We also, same night, same day, we have the Military Ball, it's the Second Annual Military Ball, it's at the American Legion, and I did double-check with the folks at the American Legion, you can go onto their website at americanlegionthb187.org, or just Google "Elmhurst American Legion," and you can find it. There are still tickets available for the Military Ball, that is, this Saturday. It starts at six o'clock, runs till 10:30. Last year, we had a Congressional Medal of Honor gentleman speak, and he was absolutely fantastic. It is open to the public. Details on how to buy tickets are online. Last thing, part of the reason why my report is so short, is that we're entering budget season. So immediately following this meeting, we will adjourn this meeting, and then we'll take about a five-minute break while city staff sets up the tables, but we will be having, the committee will hold a kickoff budget season, and there, we will be doing that until we pass a budget, which we have to do before the end of December. But the details will be online in terms of the dates where we'll be going over a budget. Today's the first of many. City manager.
Thank you. Just one item tonight, that's a reminder that fall leaf collection starts this week, so you can put unlimited leaves out for collection, and we'll have an additional one December, first week in December, 6 through the 8th, with your regular garbage.
Okay. Any other reports? Alderman Dunn?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple updates on activities with ONCC. I had the opportunity to attend the technical committee meeting of the ONCC on October 17th, where they discussed improvements to the complaint system, and they're trying to get that rectified because there's been some technical glitches with that. And also, the changes to the Fly Quiet reporting format, where they're going to be reporting on the actual time in the runway rotation at night, and then the shoulder hours is what they call them, before and after, and, because those times change when they go in and out of the rotation. But the nighttime is actually considered 10 to 7, but the runway rotation can, can kind of float in between that. So that was the update from that meeting. Last Friday, City Manager Grabowski and I attended the ONCC full commit, commission meeting, where they talked about the Fly Quiet Ad-Hoc Committee and the potential to move that into a standing committee, which is something we're going to be pursuing, as was mentioned in public comment, joining as a member of the Fly Quiet Ad-Hoc Committee and the Standing Committee as well. The Ad-Hoc Committee will be meeting twice in November. They met once today, this morning, and then there was another meeting scheduled in two weeks. The initial draft plan was presented this morning. I'm sorry, the initial Test 3 draft plan was, was presented this morning, and that will be discussed further at the next meeting for potential variations on the interim condition for the runway rotation for the next two years. So a lot of discussion that will be taking place between now and potentially early December, when the ONCC full commit, committee is not scheduled to meet, but there's a potential to throw together a, a special meeting with the intent to just approve this interim runway rotation plan. So it's definitely a rushed, a compressed and rushed timeframe. We'd like to see that stretched out and more focus and examination done on that. I looked, spent the last week or so looking at some takeoff and landing options and put forth a draft or proposed rotation plan that we believe is equitable. I sent that out to the diagonal communities and waiting on a response from them to, to see whether they support it or that they'd like to see that tweaked. So continuing to talk to those diagonal communities, and so we'll have another update next meeting, because this is moving pretty fast, and we're trying to make sure that this issue's examined in detail. Thanks.
Any other reports? Alderman Bram?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the same topic as Alderman Dunn reported in regards to the Fly Quiet and the interim, or what will be the proposed interim solution until 2020, I'd like to just ask the question, if we have submitted, Alderman Dunn just mentioned in regards to, there's a plan to request, make a formal request to have a seat at the table for the Fly Quiet Standing Committee that's being proposed. Have we made that formal request, and if not, when? I do have concerns, listening to the residents who spoke this evening in regards to the commentary that was made at the Ad-Hoc Fly Quiet Committee, and the city of Elmhurst not having a say or an opportunity to comment, at least this morning, in regards to those, rebut those In regards to what Alderman Dunn reported, and once again, I'm happy to hear something on the dais, I'd like to make a request to have better communication as one of the representatives that is impacted significantly, to hear that a alternate plan is being, or has been sent to the other diagonal committees, or communities, is great to hear. I am not aware of it until just now. I don't know what that is, if that is a appropriate plan or not. So I'd like to make that formal request, and public request, that, that this is shared before we move forward, compared to finding out after the fact, which seems to, quite frankly, be commonplace, when it comes to what is going on with Fly Quiet and our actions as a city on the future through 2020 and beyond. But my only question, I guess, is in regards to, or maybe not even a question, a request for us to make the formal request to be on the Fly Quiet Standing Committee ASAP.
Okay. Any other reports? Agenda M 9, Resolutions. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask you to read the resolution.
A resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award for the Brush Hill Road Drainage Improvement Project.
Okay, to put this before council, ask for a motion to approve the resolution as read. Much my Alderman Kennedy, second by Alderman Deuter. Alderman Kennedy, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, this was tied to an item that was in the consent agenda. This is to suspend the rules and get moving on this project before inclement weather starts here shortly. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Clerk Spencer?
Mulliner?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Sappatino?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Leader?
Aye.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Levin. Absent. Park.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, motion carries. Agenda M 9.1 is approved. Any other business? Alderman Dunn.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to talk a little bit about the YMCA parking. Back in March of 2015, I put forth a recommendation, working with Alderman, Deuter, Bram, and Wagner, on some festering safety concerns at the YMCA, in terms of the parking setup there, and there was quite a few auto accidents there, and there were many near misses with pedestrians, and there was a lot of concerns expressed by residents and Y staff. So, I'm happy to report that the project was completed. The council put that in the budget this year, and that project looks great. I've gotten a lot of positive feedback from residents and Y staff on the improvements there. I think staff, our public works staff, did a great job coming up with alternate concepts, and really honing in on one that works very well. So, Public Works, and the Public Works Committee for moving that forward. So, just wanted to point that out, and I think it was quite an improvement to what we had there. Thanks.
Any other business? Motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman Kennedy, second by Alderman Bram. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Word.